Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public participation. We appreciate hearing from our speakers this evening. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is Board Communication. Board members, who would like to begin? Don't all rush to the front of the line. Okay, Kitty?
Thank you all for coming and expressing your views. It's clear that you're very passionate about it, and I always love to see parents who are very passionate about their children. And it's always nice to see a former board member come and make us a comment in front of us. So, thank you, Pete Salas. One thing, somebody had, in one of their comments, said they were baffled. And I'm a little bit baffled, too. I'm baffled and alarmed, maybe, that an inaccurate and inflammatory email was sent out. One of the sentences in it says, "For seemingly political reasons unrelated to students' best interests, BVSD is actively looking for ways to significantly reduce local funding to Summit and the other charter schools in our district." And that is simply not true. We are not actively trying to take money away from anybody. If you looked at the proposal, the resolution that was put forward today, Summit would get, with 95% of straight per pupil funding, Summit would get $32,981 more than we're currently getting. Prep would get $8,919 more than they're currently getting. Justice would get $84,126,000 more. And Peak to Peak would get $30,211 more. So, I believe this is the plan that you're urging us to reject. Now, Horizons has a good reason to urge us to reject it because they would take a loss of $10,452. So, that's a bit, that's kind of why I'm baffled about all of this.
Sam?
Thanks to all the parents who came out, and I really also appreciated hearing from the students from Boulder Prep. I hope to visit your school soon. I think that's one I haven't gotten to yet in my time on the board. You know, we heard the comments or the words equality and equity used tonight, and they have different meanings. And I think one of the things we're struggling with, or I'm struggling with, is what is equitable funding? You know, we've made a decision to invest more to help students in certain categories, English language learners, special ed, students in poverty. What is the most equitable way to do that? So, I think that's part of the conversation we're having. Conversation isn't over, and I've heard you tonight. I look forward to continued conversation with the charter school administrators and parents. And I just want to say how fun it was to visit Gold Hill and Jamestown Schools today with you, Kathy. Little mountain schools that do amazing things. We happened upon the dedication of a huge art project picnic table that was a collaboration between a University of Colorado arts professor, some engineering students, the kids at Jamestown Elementary, and it was just a wonderful community event. And I think those small mountain schools are very special places, and I was pleased to be welcomed there by the staff and the kids. Also, a couple of graduations. Shelley and I endured the Boulder High graduation on Saturday. Thank you for sharing your umbrella with me. That was, helped at least keep my head dry. But, you know, the kids were great, and everybody got through it, and it deserves celebration. But also, at Richard's invitation, I attended, and Kathy, I believe, attended about a week and a half ago, the different kind of graduation, the El Paso Program, which trains Latino parents in how to be advocates for their kids, how to create educational environment in their home. And it's a great organizing model because the parents who are trained then train other parents, and so that kind of advocacy increases in rings from the individuals who graduated from that program. I think it was about 30 moms and dads, and it was just really inspiring to see how important they took the completion of the El Paso Program, how much they value, as we all value, our kids and seeing that they get the best education possible. And so, I encourage you, if you don't know anything about the El Paso Program, to look that up because it's really making a difference for Latino parents and kids in our community. So, a different kind of graduation, but one that was already, that was also very meaningful and moving to me. So, that's it.
Thanks, Sam. Shelley?
Yes, Sam, I'd just like to point out that Cindy was also at Boulder High's graduation, tough hanging it out.
Oh, yes.
Just as wet as the rest of us, but it was really a joyful occasion nonetheless. Boulder High grads are tough. As Cindy mentioned, I went to the Monarch, or I don't know if you mentioned it, but I was also at the Monarch debates, and it was really interesting. One of the topics of the debate was whether to ban cell phones in K-12 in the district, and I don't think they had any idea that it was a topic that we're all considering right now. So, that was pretty interesting. And I must, I'd like to point out that the kids who wanted to ban phones K-12 were the winners in the debate. So, and then today I did attend the Boulder Economic Council Summit, and the topic of that was basically talking about the challenges that Boulder employers have, sort of maintaining the workforce in Boulder, and what kinds of skills they want to see in the kids that are coming out of our school systems. And they were around things like problem solving, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, teamwork, those kinds of things. And they were urging us not to focus so much on content and much more on those skills, which I had a little issue with, but I can see their point that those other skills are also important. So, I want to thank you all who came out to speak on behalf of our charter schools. Every charter school in BVSD provides a unique opportunity for kids that attend those schools, just like our traditional schools do. And just like our traditional schools, I know the charter schools are stretching their dollars as far as they can possibly go to provide the best services for our kids. I see absolutely no reason why we would use HB 1375 as any sort of excuse to reduce funding to charter schools. After a lot of discussion, and I think Kitty, to your point, the recommendation from the district just came out this afternoon, and so a lot of people probably weren't aware that we had revised our recommendation in that regard. So, it's possible that many of the people sitting here had, were not aware of that. So, I would just say that after a lot of discussion, you know, the districts come forth with a recommendation that we distribute middle levy funding at 95% or at the rate that the contract requires, whichever's higher. So, while I think this is movement in the right direction from where we were just, you know, a week ago, I really don't see any reason to move off the 100% allocation that we are providing right now. I think that there's absolutely no reason to think that that money is not being used wisely, and I agree that those kids are every bit, our students, as are the kids at our traditional schools, and should be funded in the same way. The other concern I have about the recommendation that we just got today is that, I believe it binds future boards to align charter school contracts in 2025 with some plan that we will have devised by then, but I'm not sure why we would put that in our resolution tonight for study and why we wouldn't just leave it at whatever percentage of funding that we decide to do that at. I just don't even think we legally can bind a future board in that way. So, I urge the board to keep our current 100% allocation for charter schools. And to honor our contracts and to maintain these really important relationships that we have with the charters. And I guess I would argue, or I would, I would agree with the gentleman who asked why we would want to do this.
Anything else, Shelley? Okay. Donna?
Some people ask why we even want to surf on the board. And I was, I was reminded when I went to the Monarch High School graduation why I do this. And I didn't have any kids graduating this year, but I got teary-eyed shaking all those hands and saying, "Congratulations," and "You go, guy," or "You go, girl," and it was so exciting. But then I also was excited to hear about all the other graduations. There's still a couple I've got to do, or I'm going, I don't mean I've got to do it, but I'm going to do it. And another one, little known, is the Project Search graduation that Boulder Community Health Hospital hosted. And many doctors were there, and many of the paraprofessionals within the medical field were there that host our students and help our students to acquire jobs. One of the students also was trained and did an internship at Ball Aerospace and was hired by them at 30 hours a week. It was an exciting graduation to go to and hear these kiddos speak, so that was the excitement for me last week. So, to all you parents sitting out there that I've had lots of correspondence with, I am not in support at all of pulling any funding from you. And I won't support anything that pulls the carpet out from under something that is doing so well within our district, and we are a model to many people within our state and within our nation. So, I want to assure you, I appreciate you coming out and telling us your stories. I think that's about all I have to say.
So, just have a couple comments. Along with Sam, I went to the El Paso graduation, and that was fun. And then Cindy and I attended the Parity graduation at Centaurus, which is a similar kind of graduation in that it's just graduating the parents, mostly Latino families, who have successfully completed the BVSD program to help them learn how to better engage with the schools. And it reminds me a lot of going to Quinceañeras to go to that with the food and the dance and the celebration, and so I love going to those. And then I won't belabor it, but I've attended the Nederland graduation and the Fairview graduation and the Centaurus graduation so far, and I'm really looking forward to going to the Boulder Prep graduation and to the Justice High. I find, like you, Donna, that even though I don't have any kids in those graduations, it's hard to make it through without a pocketful of Kleenex because the stories and the work that you all do to help those students get to their graduation day and the pride that they feel in their families is just overwhelming. So, job well done, and really looking forward to that. I also, as Sam said, went to Jamestown and Gold Hill, and that was just awesome to see the good work that's going on in those communities and how much those communities come around their schools, how important those schools are, not that they're not, it's just a different feel in the mountain towns. It reminds me of my many miles I've put on traveling around Colorado to rural schools. So, thank you to those schools for hosting us and for taking the time to talk with us and to, we got to watch student presentations, and we even got a, I know you guys will all be jealous, we got a jar of honey from the Gold Hill, which I'm looking forward to spreading on something tomorrow. And then I also visited, because they were my old neighborhood schools, Bear Creek and Mesa. And I just want to point out one thing, two things that I learned while visiting Bear Creek, which, we've had a lot of conversation around technology. And what they told me, because I raised the question that we'd heard at our last technology meeting, that students were being rewarded with technology time when it was their free time. And I just thought I'd share that at least at Bear Creek, their policy is to not ever allow students to use technology in their free time. They have to find some other way to use tech, use their free time, but they're not rewarded with technology. And I just thought that was, that's their school-wide policy, and I thought that was really helpful. And what they do at the beginning of the year is their back-to-school night, which is their best opportunity to see parents and commu, well, mostly parents, excuse me, is their teachers then address at the beginning of the year how they're going to be using technology, in what way, what the expectations are. And I thought that was a really good way to engage families so that they know at the start of the year what technology's going to look like, how it's going to be used, and engage with their teachers at the beginning of the year about how, if they have any concerns about that. So, I thought those were two good practices, that at least were being implemented at one of our schools. So, as we have this conversation going forward, I think that's really helpful. And then on the issue of the charter, I have to say, and I may be alone in this, I was really disturbed and distressed to see the emails that were sent out from the charter schools to their communities. They were inflammatory and incorrect. And while I really do appreciate parents coming and talking and engaging, I want it to be on a set of information and facts that is actually accurate, and there were many misstatements in those emails. And an email went out again this morning, even after our conversations on these topics, that again was inaccurate. And as Sam pointed out, there is a big difference between equity and equal. And I pulled up the language of 1375, and what it says, and I believe this to my core, that we have the duty to ensure that the school district allocates its resources in a manner that results in the equitable treatment of all students enrolled in the school district according to their individual needs, regardless of the type of school district in which each student is enrolled. And I think we heard, again, it was hard not to want to even cry a little when we heard the stories from the Boulder Prep students and teachers about how much more it takes and how many more resources it takes to help those students who have faced trauma and a whole host of issues in their lives to get them across the finish line. And I believe in differentiated student funding to my core. I don't think that every student takes the same amount of money to be successful, and I think that's a core value of Boulder Valley, and I hope that we continue holding that value as we go forward in these conversations. So, I hope that we can lower the tenor of the emails that are going out and the tenor of some of the comments I heard tonight of being accused of being a criminal and using children as cannon fodder. I personally found that to be a little troubling because I do think, even though I may have disagreements with some of my board members, we each put students first, we each believe in the mission of our school district, we each believe that every student has, should have the opportunity to reach their fullest potential, and that kind of conversation and rhetoric doesn't help us to get to cross the finish line together. It doesn't help us work in a collaborative and cooperative way. So, I'm asking that we lower that temperature because it's not going to help us negotiate these really tricky issues as we go forward. We are in an underfunded system. Many of you may not know, I've spent my, almost my entire professional career fighting for additional funding for students, and I will continue that fight, and I hope to continue it together with all of you in a collaborative way and not in a way that divides us. So, thank you for coming and for sharing it, but I hope that we can start to work from a common set of facts and understanding instead of from misunderstandings and misstated facts. Thank you.
Now, I, oh, go ahead. And I also have been fortunate enough to go to a couple of graduations so far. Went to Monarch graduation, which is where both of my daughters went. And at Monarch's graduation, there was a first in the state of Colorado, and it was actually on Donna's side of the stage where a service dog graduated from high school, and he had a cap and gown on, and it was just really wonderful to see it. And I was at Broomfield High's graduation as well, and one of the things that impressed me about that is that they have a tradition of giving roses to the families for their support. So, I thought that was a really special touch, and I'm looking forward to being at Boulder Prep and at Summit.
Shelley?
Yeah, I'd just like to say in response to your comments, Kathy, and I do appreciate them, that I think that the board created the kind of anxiety that we're seeing here tonight and that we're getting a message through these emails, and that I don't think it's quite fair to chastise people for responding to the anxiety that we created.
And I guess all I'd say is that I hope we could have a conversation in a respectful and non-kind-of-hysterical way that I've seen it. And I understand that there's misunderstandings out there, but the best way to correct those is to have conversation. And I've offered to have conversations and haven't been taken up on those, so. So, anyway, otherwise we'll move on to information. So, the next thing on the agenda is legislative update, but the legislature, thankfully, in my opinion, is in recess right now, so we don't have much to add. You'll probably be hearing that there's lots of bill signings going on, but there's really nothing to report right now that I know of. Anybody have anything on legislative update? So, we'll move on to the next item, which is an ELD program update. Cindy, I'm handing it over to you.
Thank you. Here comes Kristin Nelson Steinhoff, who is going to be talking about the ELD program in Boulder Valley. And what I can tell you is that we have an outstanding staff and outstanding teachers, and Kristin will be able to fill us in on what the expectations are for the program. Kristin?
Thank you. Good evening, Vice President Gephardt, esteemed board, and Dr. Stevenson, thank you for having me here this evening. I began my role as the Director of Language Development this past July and am very excited to be here this evening to share one of the many projects that we've engaged in during, since July. We worked over several months with a team of about 40 educators, staff and students, around a process to develop priorities and then an action plan for our work serving emerging bilinguals in BVSD. And so, I've provided you with a hard copy of a plan, the summary of the plan. There is a much larger, more detailed piece that accompanies this, but really meant for helping direct my folks and our work. And then I also have electronically some slides to share with you and also the pamphlet electronically. So, at the end of a pretty lengthy process, we really came out with four themes for our work with emerging bilinguals here in BVSD. The first one being a bilingual pathway, the second being developing culturally responsive practices, the third being developing leadership, and the last being using research-based strategies and practices. In terms of the bilingual pathway, that really in general is developing a coherent pre-K-12 system for bilingual learning, which will allow us to expand our seal of biliteracy. As you hopefully have read lately in the newspaper and in other places, we offered nearly 300 graduating seniors the seal of biliteracy this past spring, significant, which means that they reached the highest levels in two languages, and so we're very excited about that. We also are working, the Language Development Department, working to support our BVSD equity work through that culturally responsive practices. We're also collaborating with organizations across Boulder to empower our teachers to engage in best practices with our students. When we talk about developing leadership, we're talking about developing leadership in not only our emerging bilingual students, but in their families and also our ELD teachers across our system, and really how are they the advocates for students and for best practices inside their schools. And then finally, in terms of our research-based best practices, our Language Development Team will be supporting the literacy adoption process by overlaying a language lens into that work and piloting other promising practices. So, really, we started with a purpose, and why did we want to engage in this process? The purpose that I gave to the 40 members that joined me in the work was that we would create an action step in a clear trajectory that led to a systemic approach for our work with emerging bilinguals, one that we didn't necessarily have previously. And why is that, that we haven't had that previously? A couple of things, we've had pretty significant turnover in department leadership over the past several years, but really hoping to move towards identifying and the systemic barriers that impede the equity and create actionable steps to overcome those. We also hope to, we are concerned about the achievement gap and the opportunity gap that exists not only in our state but here in BVSD, and that that, the one here in BVSD has persisted over time. We have other, had other concerns as well, but are really looking forward to engaging in the work. So, our process, what did we do? We identified stakeholders, we identified classroom teachers, ELD teachers, teachers on, our TOSSAs. We identified and invited building level and district level administrators. I personally met with a group of about 10 emerging bilinguals at Boulder High School who helped to create a presentation to share with the adults in our system, the things that had worked really well in ELD for them over their years in our district, and the things that hadn't worked very well. And so, you'll see in that pamphlet, those are actual Boulder High School students that did an amazing job presenting to our staff on our second day together, really to focus and make sure that we were focusing all of our conversations around our work on our students. We then engaged in four full-day brainstorming and work sessions. Day one, we reviewed our data and our current reality and really pushed our participants to maintain an asset-based lens and engage in asset-based discourse, which really, I think, allowed us to proceed in a really positive way. Our second day together, we dug into programming across our district. We discussed bilingual programming, we discussed secondary ELD programming, we discussed our programming for newcomers, we discussed co-teaching, we're piloting it at three elementary schools this year, and also the issue that we have in our district in that some of our schools are non-program schools, meaning we do not serve emerging bilinguals at those schools, and what could be done about that. The third day, we reviewed the roles of educators and if we were to define roles, and the 40 stakeholders defined what a language director would do. It was a little bit vulnerable, but also really positive that they could tell me what they wanted me to do. And then we did the same for all of teachers, administrators, building administrators, teachers on special assignment, et cetera, in relation to serving emerging bilinguals, and then talked about if we have expectations of these folks, what kind of professional development and professional learning do we need to be giving to teachers and building leaders? And then our final day, we really dug in deep, a little bit deeper to the issues of equity in terms of poverty and MTSS, and really dug into the collaborative drafting of the plan so that you have before you. So, I just wanted to let you know that that's what we've been up to this year, and really looking forward to putting it to work moving into next year.
Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, for all the work that you and your team have put in. I'm just looking at the point number four on the development of bilingual pathways, the removal of systemic barriers that prohibit equitable access to schools that support home language development, and you list as those, a couple of those barriers, transportation and enrollment procedures. Could you say a little more about those?
Certainly. So, obviously continuing to think about how do we help support families that struggle with transportation? For example, one of, another action plan item is to increase our bilingual offerings at the middle and the high school level. Currently, we, this year, we did add a bilingual program at Manhattan Middle School, and, but unfortunately, we don't have transportation for students from our bilingual schools to that middle school, or to Casey for that matter, and really looking at what, how, how that impacts students' ability to get there. And so, doing some more investigative work around that. In terms of the other piece around the registration and the getting students signed up for school, it's also looking at our role in the newcomer work, in open enrollment, and in completing the online registration process for students, and how are we, as a language development department, supporting that as well?
I see, so it's like the mechanics of enrolling.
The mechanics, yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Donna?
I just have a quick question. You said that you don't serve some schools with emerging bilinguals.
Yeah.
Tell me more.
So we have about nine schools total. We have one middle school and about eight elementaries that are considered to be non-program schools. And those schools do not receive support in terms of an English-language development teacher in those schools. And that, those families, if they need, would like services, they then are transported to a program school. What we're then asking families to do is leave a neighborhood school because of a program. And so one of the things that we really hope to do is look at, through our budgeting process and through our allocation of FTE, how we can really support all schools to become program schools.
Kitty?
Could you just explain to me the difference between bilingualism and biliteracy?
Certainly. So bilingualism and biliteracy really, in essence, are the same thing. Biliteracy, I mean, they both are around speaking, listening, reading and writing. When we think about program schools, we have bilingual program schools where students are learning to do all of those things in two languages. We then have students that later on in their educational career will engage in biliterate activities in the form of world language classes, and will be introduced to speaking, listening, reading and writing. But in essence, the terms are pretty similar. In our programming, however, one sort of refers to that pathway that starts in preschool and we hope to move up into 12th grade, the other being more of that world language model that starts in our middle and our high schools.
So then, do students have to do something to demonstrate biliteracy? And I noticed at Monarch, there were a lot of kids with that seal, and I was impressed.
With the green cord, absolutely. The green cord. So it was a state law that was passed last spring, and students have to demonstrate a high-level proficiency in English. And so it was a passing score on the SAT. It is a 3.0 in all of their English Language Arts courses. And it is an AP or, passing an AP, so several things. And then, in an additional language, they have to have taken, in our district, five years of programming, received a 3.0 in that programming. And students can also replace the five years of programming with an AP or an IB assessment. So yes, reaching those high levels of language.
So are there, other than Spanish, are, do we have?
Oh, certainly.
What languages do we have?
So we have.
That kids are bilateral in?
Certainly. So we have.
Literal, not literal.
Yep. So we gave out seals this year for Spanish, French, German. I'm trying to think. We do have some students that their IB assessment is pending in our Latin program, and so we hope to award it as well to our Latin students here in BVSD.
Any other comments, board members? I have a quick question.
Yes.
I also noticed the green cords. That was awesome.
Good. It was fun to see them on Facebook. I saw lots of them on Facebook.
Two hundred and fifty graduates?
So we had, so if all of those that are pending, that were waiting on IB or AP scores, all of those happen, we will have three hundred and thirty total.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
So I just have a quick question, because I noticed in the report you gave to us that you say the Ed Northwest Report, which I've read and had numerous areas of concern and areas for improvement, but we're not addressing this data? Are we encompassing it some other way? Because when I read those, can you just explain that to me?
Sure. So a couple of the key findings were really about instructional best practices. So when you thought, when I think about that fourth theme that is about research best practices, really, a lot of what was addressed in the Ed Northwest Report around the disconnect between ELD classes and general classroom, the content, language objectives inconsistent. Those were some of the reports that came out. And so really, thinking about instructional best practices was a piece, a theme inside the Ed Northwest Report. In addition to the piece around program versus non-program schools was another issue that we did address through this process.
So how are we going to be looking at measuring how these new practices are improving our instruction?
Absolutely. So we have a combination of both benchmarks, so sort of some soft celebrations around these things will be in place by these dates. So many of these action steps have, in that larger document that I shared, have specific, by this date, this will happen. In addition to really looking at our baseline data and what then are we expecting? Obviously, there are things that we'd like to see a decrease in our long-term emerging bilinguals here in our system. We would like to see a decrease in the disproportionality of our students in special ed who are emerging bilinguals. We would like to see an increase in graduation rates. We'd like to see an increase in students participating in advanced coursework. Those kind of measures, collecting both the baseline and then where are we, where are we headed, is also a part of the plan.
Sounds great. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you so much for your presentation and your answers to your questions. Thank you. So our final information item for the night is the sustainability report. Cindy?
I want to thank Jita Carroll and Jeff Medwitz tonight. They are going to talk about the work that Boulder Valley School District is doing on sustainability. And I will tell you that I've gotten to listen to them. I got to listen to them at our bond committee meeting, and they do quite a presentation. So Jita and Jeff, are you ready? You're on.
All right. So the district created its first sustainability plan in 2009, with updates in 2012 and 2015. And the sustainability plan covers four main areas, each of which has five-year goals and strategies in those areas. So that's buildings, which is construction and operations, materials, which looks at purchasing all the way to waste diversion efforts, transportation, which is how our students and staff are getting tuned from our schools, and education, which includes our work with green teams at the schools and how we communicate about these efforts. And in these four areas, we have overarching themes of climate and health. We created a sustainable energy plan in 2013 to do a deeper dive into planning for energy conservation, management and efficiency. And these, both, all these plans helped inform our Building for Success and Bond and Construction Program and are supported by Board of Education Policy, ECF. So that's as much stalling as I can do in the introduction. Until we get this up and I can hand it over to Jeff, do you want me to try to pull it up while you get going?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Good evening. So I'm Jeff Medwitz. I'm the Project Manager of Energy Systems. But before I can discuss some of our successes with, we've made with energy, I have to define some terms for you that, by which the metric that we determine success. Energy use intensity, or EUI, is a term I kind of liken to the MPG for buildings. It's basically the annual energy that we use divided by the building square footage. And the lower that number, the more efficient the building. And I'd like to remind the board of some of our goals of this energy plan that Jita described. Our 2019 short-term goal is to reduce our 2008 baseline by 20%. And that would be by the end of fiscal year 2019. And then we have an aggressive long-term goal that challenges us to become a zero-net-energy-capable school district by 2050. A zero-net-energy-capable means that our EUIs, again, that kind of MPG for buildings, is low enough, is low enough so that we can add renewables, such as solar, to offset the energy that we're using off the grid. And generally, an EUI of 30 or less is considered zero-net-energy-capable. And so that's, that is the goal for 2050, is to bring that down. And just as some comparison, right now, our district average is just over 60. So it is quite an aggressive goal. But from an energy perspective, the bond, I could say, has one of three types of projects. The first type of energy project are called renovations that feature retrocommissioning. And in these types of projects, mechanical systems are replaced, but not all of them. And so those that are not replaced, that remain, are being tuned up so that the entire building is being, is running as efficiently as possible. Of nine projects that we've completed thus far of this type, we added air conditioning to five, but yet, all of those buildings reduced their EUIs by an average of 15%. So that's really exciting work. So that's the first type of project. The second is deep energy retrofit. Scopes for these projects reach a magnitude where we're able to really take a deep dive into energy efficiency. And to date, our deep energy retrofits are on target to reduce their energy use by 34%. And finally, the third type of project are zero-net-energy-capable projects. We have an EUI goal of 25. And for those projects right now, right on your screen, we're at, we're on target to be 64% more efficient than the baseline. So results, the business-not-as-usual approach to our energy-efficient design in the bond has produced impressive results. All projects, every single one thus far, has reduced their energy use. And comparing pre-bond to last fiscal year, we've reduced our portfolio-wide EUI by about 10 points, and that's pretty significant. And we're on track to meet that 2019 goal of 20% less than our 2008 baseline. So why is this important? Well, the second biggest expenditure in the district, second only to salaries, is utilities. And our utility budget is $6.9 million. That's a lot of money that we're paying. And utility rates are not going to go down. We're seeing yearly increases. So the monies that we save or avoid can go to the classroom. And the graph in front of you is a real-world snapshot of those 16 projects that are listed of our energy spend compared from 2014, 2015 through this past year. Even though that we've gone through three years of rate hikes and inflation, through the work of the bond for those projects, we've reduced our energy spend by about 8%. And that equates to about $120,000.
All right. Okay. So in addition to energy, we have been encouraging through the bond water reduction measures where relevant. So this includes a switch to more efficient fixtures, outdoor landscaping and synthetic fields. So what the data here shows is that in the bond schools to date, we've seen about a 9% reduction in water in those schools, which is about a $30,000 annual savings. So pretty great results there. Also, water and landscaping related, we're looking into options for best sustainable landscaping practices, which will reduce pesticide and water use, decrease weeds while maintaining healthy playing fields and outdoor spaces for our kids. BVSD has existing 29 sites, 29 schools with solar panels. We recently put out an RFP for a power purchase agreement to install solar on our five new sites, so the four exemplar schools, and then the upcoming transportation, to make them as close to net zero as possible. And what we learned through the process is that if the district has money to put down upfront, it would lead to the best economic benefit for BVSD in the long term. So for example, if we're able to find roughly $2 million to purchase panels, we would see about a $3 million savings over the life of those panels versus a PPA option, which might cost the district money over the life. So we hope to come back to the board next year with a proposal on this topic. Our waste diversion target for bond construction is 75%. So this means diverting waste from the landfill through repurposing and recycling those materials. So currently, our bond projects have an average of about 60%, ranging anywhere from 17 all the way up to 98%, which is awesome. We've also added newer waste diversion stations in some of our schools, which you can see in the upper right-hand corner, and recycling containers for our playgrounds and fields. And these help with our school's ongoing waste reduction efforts. All right. So I'm going to switch gears and talk about our non-bond-related projects and our work to engage our school communities in sustainability. So the Shared Savings Program encourages change in occupant behavior. We, the program helps schools track energy use, helps modify occupant behavior towards efficiency, and allows schools to earn a reward for their electricity bill savings. This year, we have 16 schools participating in the program. So with principal support, these schools agree to form a green team, audit their school for energy use, take some follow-up action, and then educate their school community about it. The competition lasts from October through the end of June to capture savings over breaks in summers. And so we'll announce winners for this year next fall. But the current champion is Heatherwood Elementary School. So in addition to winning money, they have our traveling trophy, which is, I know why they're all really into it. This is the snapshot, I'm sorry, of how to get to our building dashboard, which is how we track energy data, live energy data, which we have for most of our schools. So you can go to the homepage and click on the energy icon, and it'll get you to the BVSD energy dashboard. So this arrow is pointing to those schools in the Shared Savings Program. But again, most of our schools are on this dashboard, where you can see live energy data and compare them to other schools and how they're doing over time. So this is what we use. We track and compare non-weather normalized data from this year to the previous year to determine those savings for the schools in the Shared Energy Savings Program. Zero-waste is another one of our focus. So all BVSD schools have recycling at their schools, and 37 of our schools now have school-wide composting as part of our Green Star Program in partnership with EcoCycle. So EcoCycle provides ongoing support and environmental education as part of our contract with them. Some of the highlights of this year's partnership include 40,000-plus BVSD students and staff participating in over 1,200 assemblies, classroom presentations, field trips and more. We have an annual waste-free lunch contest. So we had several schools compete for prizes to make the least lunchtime trash. So this year, Eisenhower Elementary won. They reduced lunchtime waste by 82%. And they also returned a surplus of 51% of the reusable forks to the kitchen, which makes food services happy. Another program is the reusables rule at our school. And this is where we've been putting in those automatic water bottle fillers through grant partnership with the City of Boulder, EcoCycle and Embroidery. So this year, we were able to install fillers at Flatterns Elementary and Horizon's K8 through this particular program, and provide water education at those schools, plus Douglas and Manhattan Middle. And we're right in the thick of Locker Leftovers Project, where we're working with secondary students to reduce waste through recycling and composting and charity, through all that stuff coming out. and charity through all that stuff coming out of their lockers. And our two new green schools for this year are Lisa Sanchez and Arapahoe High. We add about two or three schools per year to that program. And I skipped, did I skip right over those pictures? There's our zero waste, you saw. Oh, and on the right is a senior recycling his gown. So some of our schools have disposable gowns. So we've set up a program where we take them and then we give them to students the next year at those schools who might need help buying a gown, just to make sure that we're not just throwing them away right after graduation. And I heard you mentioning the green cord. CU actually does the same program, and students who sign up to do this wear the green cord. So it means something different at CU. Okay, for sustainable transportation, to date, we've been able to install electric vehicle charging stations, like you see on the left, at 22 schools. And we're able to do this through, with grant money. We've gotten 1,081, 1,081, sorry, 1,081, $540 of grant funding to help offset the cost for the project through the Regional Air Quality Council. We also have a really popular trip tracker program that you may have heard of. We've got 22 schools participating in that and about 5,000 students. And this year, those students walked or biked 176,924 miles. I got, I did better with that number, but anyway, that's a lot of walking and biking. So the school rewards them. They report their miles each month, and then they get trip tracker dollars that they can use at local venues. So we support green teams throughout the district, working on class projects, gardens, the shared energy savings program, and a lot more. One of the things we're excited about that we are working on this year is creating a green report card so that we're going to be able to highlight the efforts that are going on at each of the schools. And we're going to also create, have on there for each school their waste diversion number, their EUI and water use, and then other green features that we may be able to integrate through the bond. So collaborations and partnerships are key parts in making our occupant engagement program successful. We partner regularly with more than 20-plus environmental educator groups in the community. And we partner with CU, Boulder County, many of the local cities, and St. Brain District, and much more. One highlight from this year is in the fall, we had roughly 100 students go to CU for their Climate and Sports Student Summit. And it was just an awesome day of playing games and doing trash-on-your-back relays and how-low-can-you-go-energy games. And the students had a great time, and it was a great partnership with CU. So leadership is part of our sustainability vision. And this year, BVSD is invited to serve on the National Green Schools Leadership Advisory Board, serve as a reviewer for the USGBC National Conference. We sit on the advisory committee for the National Green Schools Conference and also presented. And we wrote at the beginning of the year an article for the Green Schools Quarterly, which is the first national online publication for this type of work. And because of that article, actually, just a couple weeks ago, we had some visitors from Denmark who came to learn more about our sustainability programs. So that is what we have for today. Thank you very much for your time, and we'll take any questions.
Board members, comments or questions? Kitty?
I have a question about the charging stations. So how exactly do they work? Do they, do we charge people? Do they put a credit card in? Or can anybody just, because I know out here, you can just plug your car in.
Yeah, at the moment, you could just plug your car in. But we're far enough along now, we're actually starting this summer, we're going to be charging people for off-hours. We want to keep it free during the day just to support sustainable transportation to and from the schools by staff and parents. But then after hours, there will be a small fee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Donna?
I just have a comment. Everybody loves saving money, and I loved your presentation. It reminded me, my son closed on a house in, in the area about a week ago. And the 93-year-old woman was, obviously was concerned about saving money and sustainability because inside all the toilets, there were baby wipe containers filled with sand and styrofoam in the windows. I'm glad we've progressed past that.
Should I write that down for maintenance as an idea?
Sam?
I appreciate all your work and the report. I look forward to them because I know we're going to continue to make progress. And I really appreciate the educational component you incorporate as well. I, I do like saving the money and the energy too. But teaching our kids to be good stewards of, of the planet and how to create a sustainable future for this, you know, this community and the world is super, obviously, super important to all of us. So I'm, I'm so glad to hear that your work is incorporated into what the students are learning. Thank you.
Shelley? Nothing? Anybody else?
I just want to echo what my fellow board members have said. This is awesome, and thank you for your, your good work in including students and staff and, and the community to the extent that they can understand what we're doing and, and learn from all of your hard work that you're doing. So thank you very much.
Can we do consent first? So board members, can I just take a temperature check here? I was thinking we would go through consent and then take a break. Is that all right with all of you? Just a... The next item on the agenda is action items in the consent grouping, and I'll read them. 7.1 Personnel Items, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, May 8, 2018, Special Meeting. Approval of Minutes, May 8, 2018, Regular Meeting. Approval of Minutes, May 15, 2018, Special Meeting. 7.5 Approval of Revised Board Policy IFF Schools of Choice. 7.6 Change Order to the General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at Broomfield High School. 7.7 Closeout to the Construction Manager/General Contractor Contract for Bond-Funded Improvement Work at the Woody Ear Elementary School Renovation. 7.8 Non-Renewal of Contracts. 7.9 Resolution 1816 to Authorize a Resolution to Accept Bids and Authorize Construction and Maintenance Projects During July 2018. 710 Grant Instructional Services and Equity Title VII American Indian Education, U.S. Department of Education, 18. Are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Hearing none? Before we begin a discussion, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Sam, so moved? Sarah second? Kitty seconds? Board members, are there any discussions of any items on the consent agenda? Hearing none? Chris, can we take the vote, please?
Benford? Fuqua?
Yes.
You have a heart?
Yes.
Myers? Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Take a five-minute comfort break, and we'll come back. We don't have any action items on the agenda, so we'll move into our study items. We lost Bill. Going to call the meeting back to order, please? Moving on to study items, we have study item 9.1, I can read, which is the 2018-19 Proposed Budget. Mr. Sutter, our CFO, I think is queued up and ready to go. Cindy, do you have anything you need to say before we start?
We're just so excited to see Bill up here tonight. So Bill, you're on.
All right, so I updated the presentation to include 37 more slides. No, I didn't do that. It was the same presentation that was attached to the agenda item. So first off, a quick review of the adopted budget priorities for the development of the 2018-19 budget. So three major categories with some subheadings under that. Support to close the opportunity and achievement gaps. Equity, support and differentiated funding for subpopulations. Social, emotional learning and supports counselors. Investment in literacy instruction and interventions. Investment in special education services. Investment in English language development. Program evaluation and effectiveness. Transparency and progress reporting. Local common assessments and other programs for students. Area two, attracting, recruiting, and retaining high-quality staff. And number three, maintaining and ensuring adequate district operational functions, particularly around school facilities, safety, and security. So under these, we have included the items that are, that are incorporated into the proposed budget within each of those areas. So around the area of equity, we have included a weighted student funding formula in the reset of the 2.25% cuts. So that's both for the school resource allocation and elementary paraeducators. So this addresses some of the concerns around funding that's available for schools that don't have as many access to resources from their parent community perhaps. So again, a weighted student formula in both of those areas. Social, emotional learning and support. So we did roll out phase two of the elementary counselor program. Literacy instruction intervention. We have the Wilson interventions with students on IEPs and supports for students with dyslexia. Investment in special education services. So we have two additional autism classrooms within English language development. So there is continued, the continuation of the current investment in ELD programming. There was not a specific budget request. If you'll remember back when we reviewed those specific budget requests, there was not a specific one for ELD programming at that time. Program evaluation and effectiveness. VisLab expansion, that's our data warehouse tools. Standards and curriculum revision. Intervention structures and tools for mathematics. In transparency and progress reporting, the local common assessment. So we do have the continued development of local common assessments. And the VisLab expansion, that's sort of duplicative, but that's the data warehouse tools. Other programs for students, so we have the preschool classroom expansion. That's one additional classroom at Eldorado K-8. And additional classroom staff for student growth. Although the student growth is projected to be very small next year, we did include a little bit extra for that. And then we have the staffing reserve to meet the needs of students as we move into the fall. For attracting, recruiting, and retaining high-quality staff, we have the 3.4% cost of living adjustment. That's in line with the 2017 CPI, Consumer Price Index, which is the inflation rate applied to the School Finance Act. We have a 5% dental and health insurance premium increase. Salary schedule movement and attrition savings there, as well as the 20, the second half of the 2018 para-rate increase, that impact. For maintaining and ensuring adequate district operational functions, we have maintenance materials, work order system and capital equipment inventory, an IT security audit, additional high school campus monitors, supervision and training, and digital communications revisioning. So next, I will go into the detail, a little bit of detail, of the numbers. And what has changed since the preliminary budget when we went through that? So we have... Salary schedule movement and attrition savings there, as well as the second half of the 2018 para-rate increase, that impact. For maintaining and ensuring adequate district operational functions, we have maintenance materials, work order system and capital equipment inventory. An IT security audit, additional high school campus monitors, supervision and training, and digital communications revisioning. So, next, I will go into the detail, a little bit of detail, of the numbers. And what has changed since the preliminary budget when we went through that? So, we have a slight reduction in the available one-time resources in the beginning fund balance. The reserves carry forward is unchanged. Reoccurring revenue is unchanged, and non-reoccurring revenue is unchanged. So, that's a slight decrease in total resources available for use. To look at specifically a couple of these areas, so in that slightly less beginning fund balance, so that was a reserve adjustment on the one-time resources when we looked at that back with the preliminary budget. We included that net of reserves as we got into the third quarter and things started to shake out, that was a little bit less. And then, on the ongoing revenue, this does include the BS factor, the budget stabilization factor, or formerly known as the negative factor, buy-down, so that was passed in legislature. On the expenditure side, so personnel, so there's a change from the preliminary. If you remember, we were a bit short overall in the budget, so this is a reduction of the expenses from that, so that brings that back in line with available resources. Other expenditures, so that remained the same. And then in one-time expenditures, these are the non-reoccurring position and other expenditures, and a little bit more detail here. So, the changes related to that 1.6 million reduction, the final para-legislation removed the, we call it the net-to-gross calculation, which is, has to do with deductions for pre-tax savings plans. That came out of the legislation. It will be implemented on new employees to para in 2020, so it's a little ways away. And because it's only new employees, it's a very small impact to the district. And then on, and then staffing detail alignment, again, with $280 million worth of personnel, that's overtime and subs and positions and hourly and salaried. As you go through the detail and shake all that out, that made that last little bit of adjustment. On one-time expenditures, we have an increase in the staffing reserve. And then, multi-year expenditures that we discussed in the preliminary budget, we have moved those out of the expenditure line and put them into a reserve line to sort of hold them for the future year expenditures. Transfers, reserves and ending balance, so no change in reoccurring transfers, no change in non-reoccurring transfers. The taper and contingency and gap reserves reduced a little bit. And then the total ending balance improved. Again, if you remember, we had a shortfall to begin with, so now we're in a positive position, which is required. So, again, a little more detail, as all the expenditures shake out and the final amount for the taper, the 3 percent taper and 3 percent contingency. And then those multi-year reserves getting rolled in to that reserve line, that accounts for those changes there. And then, again, with the change in expenditures and the ending balance going from negative to zero, we have the para and the budget detail alignment coming up. So. Three adjustments that were discussed at last Tuesday's work session, so they were not built into the budget because we were done with it at that point in time, working on the detail. So, these are three things that would be brought forward for adoption when the final budget is brought forward for adoption. IT security staff, additional FTE, classroom management software, and professional development related to that classroom management software. So, the operations and technology fund, when we last spoke about the preliminary budget, we had not included an increase in the mill levy associated with that. We have ongoing resources available within the operations and technology fund. That was a way to address any negative impact, significant negative impacts that could have come out of the para-legislation if that was, had been implemented as was originally proposed. So, there are resources available in there, which is how we would address those three items I just mentioned. Those resources can be spent, they can be saved, they can be discussed at a future meeting, we have the revised budget process to go through. So, next steps, again, bringing forward the budget for adoption at the June 12th meeting, that would include those three budget adjustments. Then in September, we'll have our year imbalances, carryover items, one-time resources available. Then in November, we have our October count finalized, so it does take about a month to finalize the October count. In December, we have the certification of mill levies. That's when the decision, the final decision would be made around potentially increasing the operational mill levy up to one mill, additional mill. Those resources could be accessed, they could be held in reserve for critical capital needs that are not addressed in the bond program. It could be set aside to address depreciation-type expenses, so kind of hedging our bets against future bond programs or certainly new expenses. That, those solar panels, as mentioned, were one of the multitude of options that are out there. And then, of course, in January is the deadline for the revised budget adoption.
Thanks, Bill. Sam?
Really quick, I should know this, but what is our share of the negative factor buy-down?
Oh, that we got, it's about five million.
Five million, okay. Also, just another kudo to the benefit staff and the district for holding the health insurance premium increase to 5 percent. I think that's worth noting, given the crazy increases that most everybody else is facing.
Double-digit increases for a lot of places, yeah.
Anyone else, questions, comments on the proposed budget? Shelley?
So, I remember last year when we were talking about, there's $100,000 in here for dyslexia, right, supports? Can you say more about what those supports are and who they're going to reach?
I cannot specifically, but I bet Dr. Messier said.
Dr. Messier?
Thank you. So, we see those being spent on two different things. One, on the Orton-Gillingham Point Teacher Program. Where we haven't quite decided at this point how much we're expanding it next year because we're waiting to see the results of a study that we've been doing on evaluating the effectiveness of that program. So, that would be one area where we would be potentially spending those funds. The other would be in supporting the administration of a diagnostic assessment related to helping teachers identify appropriate interventions for students who might have dyslexia.
So, that's fairly inexpensive, right?
Well, in this case, it would actually be some FTE to support administration and analysis of that diagnostic assessment.
And you're not talking about a universal screener, are you?
Correct, we're not talking about a universal screener at this time.
What would it look like, then?
So, the diagnostic assessment would be used after the universal screeners that we already administer at kindergarten. If those indicated that the student had some potential weaknesses in the areas of phonics and phonological awareness, then this diagnostic would be used as a follow-up assessment to that. Also, at our schools where we're implementing the Orton-Gillingham Point Teacher Program, a teacher would be able to use that diagnostic at their discretion if they believed that there was a student who needed additional assessment. And parents would be able to request that diagnostic assessment for their child if they feel like there might be an issue.
So, if a child failed the first set of assessments or showed some sort of deficiency, would it be required that they would use a dyslexia screener?
If there was a significant deficiency in the areas of phonics and phonological awareness, then the teachers would be advised to use that diagnostic.
So, then what are you using to determine that? Because if it's still i-ready, then that's been shown not to be able to do that. So, is there something new in the quiver that would identify that?
So, at this time, we're still using i-ready and i-station because those are the assessments that are approved by the REED Act requirements. We are also using a school readiness assessment, which at this time is TS Gold, but which we may be changing, depending on how the continued implementation of TS Gold goes at the state level. We'll also be implementing at kindergarten because we've purchased the Wilson Foundations Program. So, of course, that's a very in-depth phonics program at the kindergarten level. And so, with each unit, there are unit tests that go with that that assess student skills in the areas of phonics with pretty significant depth. So, teachers will be required to give those unit tests. And then, we hope that that combination of all three of those things will give us enough indication of how students are doing with regards to phonics and phonological awareness. So, yes, new arrow in the quiver are the Wilson Foundations Unit Tests.
But they're not screeners, so you wouldn't know right off?
You wouldn't know right at the beginning of the year.
And so, since we have money to do that, what would be the reason for not doing it?
Well, the reason for not doing it would be that we don't believe that an additional universal screener would actually add information that would be helpful.
Even though we know that i-ready doesn't screen for dyslexia?
If we were only using i-ready by itself, I think that we might want to ask ourselves our question about whether an additional screener would be necessary. But given that it's on top of the school readiness assessment and the Wilson's Fund, the Wilson Foundations Unit Test, we feel like the combination of those three things is worth giving a shot before we think about adding a universal screener.
So, let's say a kid gets picked up later in the process, using, what screener did we decide on for dyslexia?
The diagnostic one that we're using, we're going to be using one called Core Phonics as a diagnostic.
All right, so let's say a kid gets caught with that and we see that they have an issue. Are all of our literacy interventionists trained in OG so that if that child's at a school with a literacy intervention, if somebody there is able to help them?
Yeah, so we are still in the process of getting all of our literacy interventionists cross-trained in Orton-Gillingham. But that is a goal of ours over the next couple of years to get all of our interventionists trained, cross-trained in that.
So, it doesn't sound like that is money that's in the budget, though, for this year?
No, we are working, however, on a grant proposal in cooperation with BV Kid to the Zarlango Foundation to help fund additional Orton-Gillingham training for our interventionists and teachers. And I will say that that assessment plan that we've brought forward with the diagnostic came out of our dyslexia advisory team, which is a collaborative team of parents as well as teachers and practitioners.
So, if our goal is to train more interventionists in Orton-Gillingham, and we have money right now, we have one-time money and we have ongoing money, is there some reason we wouldn't start that right now because we've been talking about this for years?
There's a pretty significant capacity issue as well in terms of time that we have available for our staff to engage in professional learning. So, next year, with the rollout of Wilson Foundations at kindergarten, as well as the rollout of the program that we're doing at first and second grade. It puts a significant strain on the professional development time that we have available for our staff. So, to add professional development on top of that, while we're in the midst of the implementation of a major reading program, is something that I think would strain our resources.
Which major reading program are you referring to?
So, the Fawness and Pennell Classroom, as well as Wilson Foundations.
They're both new.
They're both new, they're both new. So, that's a pretty heavy professional development lift for the school district, and it's a huge implementation lift for the educational leaders at our schools and the teachers at our schools. And the interventionists who will be learning these new materials alongside those teachers.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, the only other point I'd like to have the board maybe consider is that, you know, we're getting a lot of feedback from our parents that they're concerned with the lack of web filtering on our Chromebooks. And I know Andrew's saying that he's pressed for funds to be able to do that. And I'd just like to point out that the funds are available to us and that if Andrew could identify, along with DTAC and parent community, the proper level and type of web filtering, that I think that we might want to include that as an additional budget adjustment. So, I would really very much appreciate if we could talk about that, maybe I'll suggest that agenda setting and maybe we could find out more about what that would cost before we approve this budget.
Of course, Donna, go ahead.
Sam, I-
Sorry, Shelley, were you done?
Yes.
Okay.
I wanted to ask while you were up here before you ran, got, went back, you don't have to come up, but did anybody, I saw the email that came through about the, is it the Orton-Gillingham Teacher Scholarship?
Yes.
Did we get a response?
We did push that out to all of our teachers, and I don't know.
Okay.
So, one little comment on the timing of things. So, certainly, the adoption of the budget to begin moving forward would not hold up discussions and a decision around funding some sort of web filtering thing down the road. So, there's no, it doesn't need to happen prior to the adoption of the budget. I mean, I think there's lots of conversations it would happen, need to happen.
You're saying because it could be done by January or whatever?
I don't know how long it would actually take, but it doesn't, certainly not-
At any point between now and January, you could do this, is what you're saying.
He's saying a version of that. Yeah, I mean, any, basically, any time during the year, as long as we have resources available, then it's always the opportunity to allocate those dollars and spend them.
Any other? I just have a question about the web filtering. Shelley, do you see that as one-time or ongoing? It seems like, to me, like it'd be maybe a little bit upfront, but then ongoing.
I don't know, we'd have to ask Andrew.
It's an ongoing thing, in all the conversations I've heard.
Yeah, I want to make a clarification, so there was not a request for web filtering because I don't believe there's another device we could buy that would help with web filtering. There are different types of devices, but we're already using one of the top ones in the industry, and so it would just be swapping it out. It may block some other things that aren't blocked today, but it would probably let some other things through that are blocked today. So, that was, you know, we went through the details. Additional web-blocking filtering was not a, an ask or a request or anything that I think I could do to block more. There's an RFI out right now with regard to how much inappropriate content is coming through. That's the challenge, if we knew the inappropriate content, we could filter it. And so, I'll have more details in that RFI, you should get it by the end of this week. If you want to go deeper, it's probably another study item.
I think it's a lot of conversations, I really do. I, I mean, this whole thing is just escalating. There are now 400 people on that Facebook group, in that Facebook group, who are very, very concerned about this. And I'm not sure what the right response is, but I think we need to do more than we're doing. And certainly, web filtering is something that we've heard about over and over again. So, if Palo Alto is the right tool, then why isn't it doing the filtering job that we want? Is it the way we're setting it to do it?
No, no, and any web filter will have the same problem. Web filters, all of them either over-filter in some categories or under-filter in others. And that's just due to the dynamic nature of the internet. I will point out, and this will be in the RFI as well, you have to go searching for these things. You have to purposely go out, and that's in violation of Policy JS, I'll point that out as well. If you want to find things that are inappropriate, you will be able to do that regardless of the filter. It is the nature.
I don't know what you mean by purposely, I mean, my kids have inadvertently found things on school computers, so.
And those are the cases where we're hopeful that people will report them to us, and then we can block the specific URL. That is what the information we really need.
I'm wondering if there's a different way to deal with some of these questions, rather than the end of a board meeting when it's just a back and forth. So, I'd like to talk to Tina and find out how we might deal with some of the questions. So I'd like to talk to Tina and find out how we might deal with some of the questions in a different way.
Well, I'm going to put it on agenda setting.
Whether it's a study session or whether it's in, so that we can get your questions answered. But I don't think we're going to do much just back and forth right now.
Well, I was just trying to figure out if we needed to allocate any more money for that in terms of the budget.
And that's a fair question.
Yeah. So I'll put it on agenda setting.
I was going to say, maybe we could bring it up at agenda setting.
Yeah.
Board members, anything else for Bill or on this topic, this study item? Okay. I think, thank you very much, Mr. Sutter. Are we bringing this back then for approval on June 12th?
Yes.
Okay. That's the current status, is bringing this back for final approval on June 12th. All right. Our next study item is 9.2, House Bill 17-1375 Plan Relating to the Distribution of Local Mill Levy Override Revenue. I think, Cindy, we have, Melissa, is that right? Yes, please.
So the board had a work session and we went through a proposed resolution. We've had multiple conversations with different financial scenarios. So what's in front of the board tonight for study is a revised version of the resolution. And so where we left off with the work session was a plan that carved out from the mill levy revenue, a portion of the mill levy dollars to pay for the district-wide ELD, English Language Development Program, with all the remainder of the mill levy money being distributed at the 95% rate. And so since that time, we have been in discussions with the charter schools around the contract issues. We have contracts with each of our five charter schools that expire on different dates. And so how do we align that in such a way? So we're trying to figure out a way to maintain the status quo so the board can continue this conversation while at the same time getting a plan on the books by July 1 so that preserves the board's right in the future to have a plan in place. So what is presented tonight is a way to meet the letter of the law, which is having this 95% statutory minimum or what's been negotiated in the charter contracts, whichever's higher in place through 2025. And then at that point, the last charter contract would have expired. By then, we would have negotiated. The board might have come up with a different plan in the interim, but this plan would have whatever the, the plan, it would have, roll into this ELD-type funding of the program, the district-level program with 95% of the, the rate for the remainder of the mill levy monies. Does anybody have any questions about the contents of what has been presented to the board for study tonight? And then I know you all will have a discussion with that.
Shelley?
My input.
All right. Melissa, can't we just decide how much we're going to allocate and leave out all this 25, 26 language? And, I mean, why are we doing that? Why can't we just give them some certainty that this is where we are? And then if another board wants to take this up because there's some other issue that comes up in the future, then just let that happen. I, I feel like this is, why are we way out there? Six, seven years out there, we're, we're trying to decide what we're going to be doing. I don't understand why we put that in the resolution.
So the board can decide on the plan that it wants?
Yeah. So why put this in there?
So we've had a work session and numerous other conversations with the board, and this, there's been an indication that this is the type of plan that the board is supportive of.
We, we've not had a conversation about this 2025, 26. This is the, we saw this this afternoon.
Out of the last work session was a plan implementing the ELD 95% hybrid plan immediately with the 1920 budget.
Which is not this.
So this is pushing that out.
Right. So, but we, this is the first time we've seen it. And I don't understand why we're pushing it out six or seven years as if we know what we're going to want at that point. Why don't we just write the resolution for whatever we decide the allocation's going to be now and leave it at that until the next board wants to change that for some reason?
If that's the direction of the board, we can draft it that way.
Well, I guess I'm just asking why do we write it? I'm, I'm looking for the rationale for why we did this so I can decide whether that's a good rationale or not.
The resolution that was presented at the work session, I think we ended the work session with everybody not needing further discussion on that proposed plan.
No, I'm talking about the, this resolution. I, this is not what we saw at the work session.
Right.
Agreed?
I think, Shelley, are you asking specifically about the date, the 25, 26?
Yes, that's all I'm asking about.
And I think that's, that's when the peak-to-peak contract expires.
Right, I know that.
And so I don't think that we have to have that date. That was just, that's the reason for that date.
Uh-huh. But you understand my concern, like a future board, we'd have no idea what they might want to do, and we're looking out now seven years.
Right. So is your preference that we would just remove the date?
Well, the, all this language about anything in the future, I don't, we should just decide on the percent that we're going to allocate. And, and once we decide it, then leave that to the future.
Okay.
That's, that's my opinion. I don't understand why we would do that. Does anyone, can anyone think of a good reason to do that? I, I mean, to put that in a resolution at this point?
I, I would like to give the charter schools the needed information that they need now and rather than say, we'll put all this on hold. It, it doesn't make sense to me, and, and I, I agree with how you're putting it. I had some questions tonight after the ELD presentation itself and how that, because from my notes, that she was talking about the nine schools that don't have it. And those nine schools, you know, it's, it's FTE distribution, the water, we muddy the waters by talking about FTE and not money and then talking about how, showing that ELD reduction to the charter schools and how that would impact them. So I'm, I'm really confused. And I think the charter schools are confused as well and need to know definitely what can we depend on. That's.
Let me do a check. Are you all asking us to go back and come back to you with a different plan, a different presentation? Because I'm not sure what we're hearing and I'm not sure what we would go away and do right now. And, and can I hold on the ELD for just a minute and then I'll come back to that? But as far as the, the allocation under 1375, are you asking for a different plan?
Well, I, I, I think that for me, whether we get to 95 or 100% on it is, is a legitimate question.
Right, okay.
We should have a conversation about that, but I would have to vote no on this, the way it's written, just because it doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay.
And, and I also just want to say to your point, Melissa, when we were presented with this 95% ELD option at the last work session, that was the first time we saw that, too. So I don't think that there was consensus that night. It was the first time we had seen it and we were thinking about whether that was the best way to do it. But to, to now make a resolution with the assumption that the board was all there on that, I, I just don't think is accurate. So I, I think that what, what I would prefer is if we, this resolution said 95 or 100 and then we had the conversation about that. And if we really want ELD to be in there, we have a conversation about that, but all the rest of it is out.
Okay. Let me do a check with the rest of the board. Where's the rest of the board?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
It's, it's not fine with me. I think what, I think we're required and I think where we were headed, and I disagree, Shelley, I think we did have consensus on the last one, but I agree it's been a shifting, shifting target a little bit, is that I think we, if we don't have a plan and we don't talk about a plan by July 1st, we've waived that opportunity. And I, for one, am not willing to waive that opportunity. And we can't do anything by statute, and we haven't proposed to do anything for the next budget year. So what I thought we were trying to do was to give ourselves time to actually look at this over the course of the next year. And so I wouldn't want a resolution that forecloses us from doing that. And that's what I hear you saying, Shelley, is we should just go strictly 95 and 100 and not have the program discussion. And I, for one, am not willing to have that conversation yet, and I don't think we're ready to have that conversation yet. We don't have the numbers. We haven't, we're, it, so this allows us to have time to, so it's a plan to have a plan. And I would not want to have a resolution that doesn't allow us to do that.
Kitty, what are you?
Yeah, I didn't, I did not hear it that way. I thought we can still move forward with a plan.
Okay. So it, it seems to me there's some confusion around the wording of this resolution.
I think there's major confusion, which is why I would say we were not in consensus the last time we talked about this. Obviously not, so.
Sorry. So, so Kitty?
So I didn't get a chance to see this before tonight because I was out of town and, anyway. So if I'm reading it correctly, they'll get 95% with the formula of dividing by the per pupil count, or they'll get...
What's already negotiated in their charter contract?
Right.
Whichever's higher.
Right. So this isn't cutting anything for now from any of the schools. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought. And I didn't understand that if we don't do a plan this year, we can never do a plan. That's-
My understanding is the statute requires us to have a plan in place by July 1st. And I don't want to be the test case that if we don't have one in place, if we can try to put one in later. So I think we need to have a plan, at least a plan to have a plan, in place by July 1st.
But we can change the plan, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we could put a placeholder plan just so that we have the, the room to create a plan? Is that correct?
That's my understanding. And it's important for people to understand that nothing will happen this year. Everything is status quo. There'll be no cuts to charter schools. There'll be nothing happening this year to the charter schools, or, I mean, we have a pretty favorable budget thanks to some increases from the legislature, and everybody will share in that. Leslie?
So based on what I'm hearing, what would you think about the 95 or 100% you can have that conversation? And then taking out the other detailed language, but leaving in, do you see the paragraph there on page two at the bottom, where at least we call out the statutory special groups that are in the statute as things that the board might look at in the future, but take out the special ELD language, leaving in the alternative education campus, special ed and those areas that are called out specifically in the statute? Some of that paragraph is in that? On page two, or at least I'm looking at a red line version.
You're talking about the board reserves the right?
Mm-hmm. The board reserves the right. Do you see that? Second to the last paragraph on page two.
So why would you take out ELD?
Well, I'm just proposing if that's too specific for other board members.
Well, I'm, why wouldn't you just put it in that list of things?
You would.
Yeah.
You'd add it to that list down there, yeah.
Sorry. Kitty, did you have a question?
I think so. So if we did the ELD, you know, the hybrid 95% in ELD, then would it be 5% of all mill levy overrides that are available legally to use for ELD would be used for it?
No. The way that I understand the calculation would be, we would look at the, the cost of the ELD program that the district provides to the students with those needs, take that dollar amount off of the total mill levy dollar amount, and then what's left would be distributed at 95%.
Oh, okay. So it wouldn't be adding-
So that number would, I guess, fluctuate from year to year.
Yeah. So that's not adding to ELD? It's just, I guess I just don't quite understand that part of it.
Mm-hmm. It's not adding additional expenditures to ELD, it's just taking that and funding it out of the mill levy overrides.
Okay. And then, so if we did that proposal with the 95% or whichever is higher, and isn't everybody negotiated at 100 except for, well-
It varies.
Oh, okay.
It's pretty complicated.
Yes, somewhat. If you were here when we passed the levy, then you are getting 100% with a few exceptions from some of the old levies that are in contract language. But to be in compliance with state statute through this resolution, we would give additional resources to Justice High.
Yeah.
And the intent would be to keep the other charter schools, they wouldn't lose any money, at least for the time being, it would be to keep them whole.
Okay. I think I understand that. Yeah, because I'm not interested in pulling the rug out from under charter schools, you know, or any school for that matter, so.
Donna?
So what about the nine schools in the ELD and how that?
I'm going to have to talk to Kristen tomorrow and find out exactly what she was referring to, because I don't know whether those are nine schools that have needs that aren't being served or whether they're nine schools that aren't qualifying.
She said they were nine schools not participating in the program. And from what I understand from reading this bill, that if this, if a charter school even chooses not to participate in a program like transportation, let's say, they still get the funds from it. So, so are we giving our funding to these nine schools that are not participating?
Well, I'm not telling you that Kristen was speaking of nine charter schools. So I need to talk to Kristen tomorrow.
Well, so-
Yeah.
If you remember, Donna, when we looked at the list, there are schools, including some of our charters, that had very low numbers in ELD, they didn't get FTE. That's what I thought she was referring to.
And I need to talk to her. So I will clarify tomorrow and get information out to you.
So the important part of looking at that is that we treat our charters and non-charters in the same fashion when it came to this distribution of ELD, and that showed that we would. Because the schools that had such low numbers didn't get the FTE. And I think what I heard Kristen say is that they needed to train those teachers so that they would be able to provide the services in those schools. We just had nine schools where we didn't have that in effect yet.
I mean, the students are entitled to the services they need. So she was talking about if they are, their neighborhood school is a non-program school, they need the services. They've been transported to its program school to get the services.
And so she was hoping at some point to be able to service them in their neighborhood school. But there were only nine schools that were, fit that category.
Correct. But I think some of our schools are also, charter schools even, are using, I think we get, the water gets muddied when we talk about FTE and not actually dollars being spent because that FTE gets distributed in many different ways, whether it's para, counselors, divided up. And I think our charters are serving that sped population and our English language learners in, go ahead.
Can I finish?
In, in various ways.
So can I just respond to that?
Of course you can.
That's partially true, but not totally true. If you look at the percentages, our charters are not serving the same percentage of special ed as, as our neighborhood schools. And so I think part of what this is allowing us to do is, and you're right, Donna, it's hard to figure out, which is why we need the year to look at it. Because 1375 assumes certain budgeting processes and procedures that we don't have in place. So we, we service, as you know, because you were in special ed, we service the kids where they are as a system, and that's what we do. But a couple of the charters aren't part of that system, and so we just need some time to look at this. Some of, many, several of our charters are part of that system and get the services through BVSD. So all this does is allow us to get some more clarity around this, which is what I think, given the conversation we're having here, we could all use.
Can I, can I take us back to the resolution? Do you want to accept that for study tonight and then we bring it back? Or do you want us to walk away and revise the resolution?
I think I'm hearing we need to revise the resolution. Is that what I'm hearing, board members?
Well, I, I have another comment.
Okay, Shelley.
That will help. So I'd just like to point out, I don't know of another district that's doing this. I mean, that's coming up with some sort of random plan to address HB 1375. So I'm not sure why we are. And I, and I don't understand why, if we're going to move forward with this ELD thing, how can we do that in all fairness? I mean, there are many schools in this district where we're not taking this, that same look at it. And, you know, I don't want to single any school out, but there are plenty of schools that don't have much of an ELD population in our district. And so if we're going to be fair, we would look at every one of those, and, and we're not doing that. So why are we singling out the charter schools to do that? I, I just don't understand the logic of that.
I actually think we are doing that. I think that's what that chart that we had a couple of weeks ago showed, is that schools that had low populations were not getting the FTE. And so we would be treating them fairly. But, but this is all, this is why I think we just need the placeholder so that we can have- can have the conversation going forward.
Well, by placeholder, though, you're just creating another year of anxiety. I, I don't under, I just don't understand why we would want to do this. It's not like a charter school's planning horizon is one year. They're trying to staff and plan many, several years out, just like the school district is, and so why, why wouldn't we just give them the certainty of knowing that they're going to get what they used to get? They're doing a great job. You heard it from parents, from students, from teachers, from administrators, there's no reason to cut their funding in any way. It's, we have other ways of making things equitable in this district. We don't need to do it by cutting charter school funding.
So the question's, what is the resolution going to say, and how do we go forward, and we can continue to have that conversation? So I'm just trying to, the question I thought on the table was, do we want to revise this resolution? How do we want to bring it back so that we can continue the conversation? Kitty?
I'm fine with revising it. I would not want to take away the la, or second to last paragraph, I think it is, that gives us the option to come up with a plan that we might think would work better for our students. And we might, we might think we don't have one that works better, but if we throw out the opportunity to develop a plan, I think we're, we're missing an opportunity, because we need to be equitably funding everybody.
So bring back a revised resolution for study at our next meeting, is that what I'm hearing?
I think that's what I'm hearing, revise the resolution. I guess I would also ask, though, I'm not, I, I, I understand some of the points you weren't revised, you want revision in, but I don't know that we have all those points. So I'm wondering if we could just go across, and you could tell me if there are other things you want in the revision, real quickly?
Yeah, I don't know. What I would like to see is a simpler resolution that says we're either going to fund at ninety-five or a hundred percent, leave out the ELD, and I don't know if we don't do a quote "plan" this year, whether that second to the last paragraph is even relevant, because we could put it in a resolution, but I don't know if by law we can create a plan if we just end up going with ninety-five or a hundred percent this year. So somebody's going to have to tell us that before you leave in that second to the last paragraph. But I don't think we reached consensus on the ELD deduction last time, and I don't know why it would automatically be in the resolution. I think what we're really concerned about is the ninety-five or the hundred percent at this point. Sam, anything else?
I like the second to last paragraph, and I would leave it in there, but I, I was responding, Shelley, to your con, your comment about why we're referencing, I know why we're referencing twenty twenty-five, because that's when the peak-to-peak contract expires, but I don't know why those, that particular date, which is so far out in the future, when almost none of us will still be on the board, needs to be in there.
Donna?
Yeah, also, it seems to me that twenty twenty-five is, is to ensure that we hold to peak-to-peaks contract, and, and so I, I agree that taking it out, I don't want to wait seven years. I, I think this shows that we're going to try to do something, but the second to last paragraph, let's see, where is it?
Starts with the board reserves.
Well, let's even move up further. In connection with the implementation of this House bill, seventeen, thirteen seventy-five plan, the board will ensure that no later than July first, each charter school contract is aligned with resulting plan. I, I wouldn't put any, just align with the plan, so there's lots of verbiage in there that, that I think could be adjusted, and I think I already sent you earlier today just, just one comment that I had, like, taking out will and could, just little things, so that's my thoughts.
Kitty?
Did I say I was going to...
No, we're just going around the table to see.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm going to ask Melissa, because I think we asked this, if we, if we want to have a plan, we have to say it now, right?
We need to call it a plan and, and pass it before July one.
Yeah, so I definitely want to keep the option to have a plan, and so I definitely want that. I don't see any reason not to say that every charter school's, you know, you know, new contracts would not be aligned with the plan. We would, if we have a plan, we'd want them to be aligned with it, so I'm okay with that. The date doesn't really matter that much to me, but otherwise, I would keep it as it is.
Shelley? I think, given all this conversation, it needs to come back on study.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. And just, Shelley, in response to your comment that no other districts are doing this, I don't think we can compare ourselves to other districts. Every district has unique contracts with their charters and unique funding arrangements and unique interpretations of this. I don't think that benefits us right now to try to guess without knowing how...
I haven't heard of one, so...
So, and, and every district is unique in the number of charters they have and the relationship that they have at their charter schools, so that gives us an opportunity to figure this out for what works in BVSD.
Yeah, most, I think most don't have as good a relationship as we do have, and I don't know why we would want to jeopardize that.
And nobody wants to jeopardize it.
And answer me, don't we need to honor the contracts that we currently have in place?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
A question for Shelley, so what districts have you heard from or heard about?
I haven't heard of any that have done this.
Okay, so, but you haven't heard of any that haven't done this?
I've heard of from people who have said that there's not a single district they know of that's doing this.
Okay.
So Cindy, I would favor keeping the language in.
Say that again.
I would favor keeping the second to last paragraph language.
Second to last paragraph, that, that language.
And I am strongly in favor of making sure that we have a plan, so that we have the option as we go forward to look at what this is. I strongly believe that all our children, that all our schools should support all our children, and that some schools shouldn't be exempt from supporting all of our students. And right now, the system that we have, we don't do that.
Kathy? So how about if we try and create a simplified resolution based on what we've heard tonight, and try and get that to use sooner, so that you have some time to look at it and ask us questions before the twelfth, and then bring it back for study on the twelfth?
That sounds good.
Okay.
I think to an earlier email from Shelley, we may be headed towards a meeting the end of June, even if it's just on this issue, which would be fine. Any other comments, board members? Thank you, Melissa, for bringing this forward and for your patience, and we'll look forward to getting the resolution and giving feedback to Cindy and staff as we go forward. Does that sound good? Okay, so we're finally to agenda setting. And I apologize, I don't have Tina's cheat sheet of what's coming up on agenda and all of that. I know we have budget coming up. Is there anything? Yeah, it's in Board Docs, but I didn't pull it up yet, so is there anything we want to add? I know, Shelley, you'd like to add a conversation around web filtering. When would you...
So right now, what's on for, do you want to hear what's on for June twelfth?
Sure.
Common assessment implementation update, contract to install cameras on buses. So that's something I'd like to add to the agenda setting. I sent you that paragraph that inadvertently got let, left out of the camera policy, and I'd like to have the board look at inserting that back into the policy, and so I would love to have that on agenda setting. Ratifying the...
Shelley, could you send that again?
Yeah.
To, and double, double check that I have it. Thank you.
Ratifying the BVEA contract, HB thirteen seventy-five, which would now be study instead of action, and then budget adoption is on for action, a CBOC update is on for information, and then the cancellation of the June twenty-sixth meeting was on for consent, but I think we're rethinking that.
Yep.
So I, I would...
Is there anything you'd add, other than the change, the addition to the policy that was deleted?
Yeah, I want to bring back the, the student memorial discussion, because we never really resolved that, and we're still getting emails from that dad who's waiting for us to decide what that's going to look like. I, I think that we need to start thinking seriously about trying to get a cell phone policy in place before the beginning of the next school year. So that would look like, with two meetings left, that would look like something's got to be on study next, next time, and I've thrown out a straw man, which I'm happy to have discussion about, and so if we want to use that as a straw man, or if we want the district to bring forward a straw man, I don't think it matters as long as we have that discussion, I think. And, and I think we also need to talk about whether we want to take some action with regard to some of these technology concerns that does, don't cost us any money at this point, things like blocking gaming, blocking social media, blocking Google Chat, those kinds of simple things that could be done at no cost. I think we need to have a conversation about that before the end of the year.
Do you mean the end of the year, like June thirty, or the end of the year December?
No, I mean, sorry, the end of the year, as in before we go on break in July, so that some things are decided for the school year coming up. Yeah, so those are the things I have.
Sam, do you have anything? Donna?
You have to add, no.
Kitty?
I agree with Shelley.
I just am struggling with how we add all that in when, when we, I, I don't have a problem, and I think we can certainly, what I'm going to do is punt this to the board president, having a study item on another study description around technology and cell phone use. I think we have to figure out a way to add that to our agenda, probably on June twelfth, with the idea that if we could come to some consensus, we would be able to put it on action by the end of June.
So Kathy, did you suggest we do a study session, or did you suggest...
Add it as a study item to the agenda.
We add a study item, thank you.
And I think I hear two areas, it could be a long meeting. One is cell phone, and the other is technology, no-cost technology issues. And we may have to flush that out between now and June twelfth. So any other issues to add to agenda setting, or any other issues for the good of the order? Thank you, staff, for hanging in there for a long meeting, and to our audience for hanging in there. This meeting is adjourned.